Okay. Chairman Glass.
Here.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Bob Kennedy. Chairman Hewer.
Here.
Chairman Saye.
Here.
Chairman Romero.
Present.
Did I say Chairman? I meant Commissioner.
And I spoken.
Commissioner Putnam.
I'm here.
We're all responding, responding to Chairman.
Nobody got it either.
I one hundred percent apologize. Okay, Scott, so we have Commissioner Kennedy absent today.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, oral communications. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak? On any matter that's not before us today, we wouldn't take any action, but you could bring it up. Lots of people out in the audience, so I think we're good there. Consent calendar?
Minutes.
Just the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone want to make a motion about last meeting's minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve last minute meetings minutes as stated on the staff.
Second?
All second. Oh, sorry.
You can have it, Yoli.
Commissioner Hewer?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Smith? Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Commissioner Saye?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Jean Adamus Scott with Bob Kennedy absent.
Hey, our first item tonight, I have to abstain from because it's at Hamilton Code to CUP. This is my last meeting, so I wanted to say thank you to all of you. I've enjoyed serving with you all and it was, it's been a pleasure and I've learned a lot. And I'm gonna check out now, but I'm not gonna sit here to come back and say close the meeting. Our chairman-to-be can do it. So I'll abstain now and get out of the room and you guys have a great meeting. Good luck to you all.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you, Bart. You will be next. Reading of our first item, one and only item, I should say.
Item on our agenda tonight is requesting a transient rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than thirty consecutive days at 211 Marte Cortez. The owner and applicant are in the audience, Tom and Vicky Basset along with Corianna from CIVR. The property is located with the low, low-density residential zone and it has three bedrooms and three baths. The property manager is CIVR along with the twenty-four hour contact. The proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the State Secret Guidelines. The project requires the coastal development permit under Section 9-8.102 B2V of the Avalon Municipal Code and the project is within the three hundred foot appealable zone. City staff have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transient rental license. Staff is recommending the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the State Secret Guidelines to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is within the three hundred foot appealable zone and find the application is allowed under the 2024 annual growth policy. And I would like to mention too, in the staff report, it refers to the unit being up for the transit rental, transient rental as the lower unit. It is in fact just the second story of the single-family residence. So it's just one unit and they're renting out the lower portion of their, their home. Just for clarification, I did put in the staff report by mistake that it was a lower unit, but it's in fact just one, one home.
I've got a question. And I think it may be obvious, but the reason we're hearing this is they actually applied prior to the moratorium.
August of 2023 and it was continued to a date uncertain because their power, Edison could not install permanent power at that time. They got it in before the moratorium was issued. No problem.
The hearing. Anybody like to come up and talk about this? Please state your name and address.
We're the owners, Tom and Vicky Basset, and I just want to tell you that we have been waiting a long time for Edison and finally got our electricity and we were excited to share the, our beautiful home with our family and we would like to rent it out so if more people can enjoy it and will, it'll not be rented out at a long-term basis, just short-term because it would cost way too much if they were permanent residents.
And we need the money in order to...
And you will have the money from the rent.
The results that we had in mind that we're gonna rent it out, cover the costs, which extremely for the, this housing is so much higher than we could afford without the rental income. And we have a good company that's going to rent it out to people, the revenue, they'll take care of it and they're not gonna let it go with an A, one of those things.
I know.
One of those rental companies that just lets anybody come in.
So if you have any questions, really.
That's about it, I guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Close the public hearing? And any questions for our motions?
I'll make a motion to approve with the city's conditions as stated in our staff report.
All second? All for a vote? Commissioner Hewer?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Saye? Commissioner Romero?
Oh, due to high saturation.
Commissioner Putnam?
Well, I had a question that I didn't...
I asked if anybody wanted, had any questions.
Okay, I didn't, I did, never mind. So approve it. I mean, but...
Questions? We can still take your question if you want to ask.
I was concerned about the swimming pool and not just the fence or lock or gate, whatever.
I can answer that. The swimming pool is locked and the renters are not going to be near the pool. There's no way they can get in that section at all.
Okay, well, that wasn't my question.
Yeah.
My question was that since your pool is a freshwater pool, right?
Yes.
Since there's no salt water out there, so in the event of a drought, when we're back on rationing, when we typically cut back on, you know, how many people can occupy something? And, and in town with, you know, hot tubs and jacuzzis at spas, et cetera, you can't, you can't fill them again. So I don't know if that's in here anywhere.
Well, the pool could be drained and not been used at all uncovered up if we, if necessary with watered conditions.
Well, that's what I mean, but I don't know if that's a condition of approval or...
The same restrictions that would apply to the pool, that would apply to any pool, whether they have the short-term rental permit or not, they would have to comply with the restrictions.
Yeah, okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Commissioner Putnam, how do you vote?
It was good.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Scott, we have four yeses, one no, one absent, and one abstain. The motion passes. Any more commission of business?
I actually just have a question for you. So the moratorium ends August, correct? So will we be doing any recommendations, giving any recommendations to the council regarding? Or will we be chiming in on?
Yes. The, the short answer, the answer is yes, whether or not that happens before a decision to extend or not extend the moratorium.
You can extend it a year, right?
I'm sorry?
They can extend it another year?
Yes.
Okay.
In which will probably happen.
At this stage, because of where we're at, I mean, we are, we had to go back thirty years of hand reviewing planning commission minutes to make sure that we've documented each and every CUP license that has been granted. So it's been a pretty labor-intensive process. We hope to have that done soon, but that's, we can't really move anywhere until we know how many units we're dealing with right now. So, yeah, we expect that in July, we'll be discussing it with planning commission and council about extending the moratorium.
So we extend it, then we, we can go into further discussion like we did the last time we changed it from a, okay.
But no matter what planning commission's gonna be discussing, short-term rentals extensively coming up, yeah.
Okay, when you're doing this process of finding them, are you like verifying that they're still active? Are you doing, are they doing all of that at the same time?
Well, that's part of it, right? What we're finding is, you know, there's, there's a few urban legends around with these things such as, oh, you can grandfather them, you can bank them, you can... And there's nothing that supports that, so we're trying to get these into categories of, you know, known that are active, that are, that we know about, that are paying their TOT and doing everything right. Others that were granted and where are they at, trying to document this number of sales on the CUPs. I mean, we're, we're gonna come out of this with an exact list of what we're dealing with going forward, which had to be done, right? We had, we had to be, this had to be done. The record-keeping and Donna's on the front lines of this in the past was, you know, sketchy at best. I mean, we're running into, you know, references to properties, different addresses than they currently have thirty years ago, you know? So really to down, to get down into the weeds and determine each and everyone and verify them is taking time. But we want to make sure we have everyone verified, because we don't want somebody coming out of the woods, you know, thirty days after we pass whatever we're gonna pass and say, I had one granted in two thousand and two, what about me? So that's where we're at.
Update?
Absolutely.
Anything else? Any more business?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that with the new commission, I hope that the commission takes up other things than vacation rentals because there's a lot of opportunities that a planning commission can do, which we've had plenty of time, we've had canceled meetings for lack of a, you know, a lack of a subject to, to discuss. So I'm hoping that with the turnover, you'll, you know, get into new things because there's, God knows, there's enough in this town to do. I mean, I won't be here anymore, but I'll still be here because I am an islander and I am devoted to the town and the island. Just won't be in the city anymore, so, but I hope that it moves forward well.
Yeah, I hope so. Thank you, Sandy.
I would just, I just want to say, take a quick opportunity to thank, well, Sandy and Bart on behalf of the city for, for all their service on this. This is not an easy role, as all of you guys know. It's not like you're getting paid for this and, and doing this. It's a commitment and it's a willingness to do it on behalf of the city and it, so much that we have to do, we rely on you guys. And to, to look at, as Sandy says, what's coming up, I mean, it's not just vacation rentals. There's some pretty heady projects coming our way with the hospital project, city housing, hopefully, that, that we're gonna be bringing to you. So we appreciate everything that you've done and I, I understand where council's coming from. They want to see, you know, there's a lot of people, twelve applicants this time, which is a far cry from what we normally see. We usually have to ask people to apply. So it's great to see the interest, but the downside to that is we lose some qualified people by rotating it out, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Sandy.
Anything else? No? All right, meeting called adjourned. Our meeting adjourned.